Okay.
All right, it's March 2nd, 2021, 7:30 PM. Going to call the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order members present. Myself, Joe Hall, Bob Shabbett, Lori Semperban, anyone else?
I think we just picked up Doug.
Okay, so we have Doug Roberts as well, and I don't see Andy, so not yet anyway. All right, let's see, applications to be received. PZ-21-6, special permit renewal, section 15, excavation sand and gravel at 180 Tolland Turnpike. Applicant Diane Becker, owner Holt Mountain LLC. Got item two, PZ-21-7, special permit renewal, section 15, excavation sand and gravel at 171 Tolland Turnpike. Applicant Diane Becker, owner Becker Lawrence. Three, PZ-21-8, special permit renewal, section 15, excavation sand and gravel at 9 George Drive. Applicant Diane Becker, owner Becker Lawrence. Four, PZ-21-9, special permit renewal, section 15, excavation sand and gravel at 328 Ruby Road. Applicant Diane Becker, owner Ruby Associates, General Partnership. You have any comments on those, Mike?
No, so this is sand and gravel. The regulations require it to be a special permit, but if it's a one-year renewal, there's no hearing. So these are just to be received. And they'll be discussed and presented by the applicant at a subsequent meeting.
Okay, and there's been no issues with zoning with any of that, right, in the last several months?
I am not aware that I've received complaints recently, no. So we'll have all of the, whatever the applicant submits as part of the renewal, we'll make sure to get to you for the next meeting.
All right, now we'll receive that prior, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, thank you. All right, so item D, public hearing. PZ-21-4, section 19.07, .02, .04, special permit to modify commercial plaza signage at 11 Phelps Way. Applicant Greg Bristow, owner BTV Realty of Wellington LLC. So the public hearings open? Greg, you out there? Thought I saw him.
Yeah, I saw him.
Yeah. I do see him there, maybe.
There we are, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Somebody had me muted. Good evening, how's everybody doing?
Good.
Great.
So have you guys all got the updated drawings that we put in today? And what do we have for questions?
So they have what was submitted originally, if the revisions, if they're the same as what you emailed to Ashley. I can share my screen, so everybody can look at them, if that's probably the easiest thing to do.
That sounds great. They were included in the email that you sent out, Mike.
Yeah, he revised them a little bit earlier today. So I just, so Greg, I have the building signs, the road permit, I think the road sign and the second proof. Is there one you want me to start with?
No, the biggest thing that really, what I accomplished today was, Mike, what you and I talked about the other day. We wanted to put down etched in stone exactly what sign size would be allowed per tenant space. And I've got that all listed out on a site plan, so that we've got it on permanent record.
Mike, if you could just put it on the screen, so as we're talking about it, it would be helpful.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, so. Can you all see that?
Um.
Part of it.
I see part of the building plan.
That's what I see too.
That's just basically the schematic of the building.
Yeah, so you should see the red. Yeah, you should see the red. So just to back up and give you a little bit of background on my end, so that you can understand what he was referencing. One of the things that I felt was important, and Greg and I agreed to, is that we have a very clear plan for how much signage would be divvied up for each tenant space, so that if in a year, a tenant comes forward, I know that based on what tenant space they're in, how much signage their individual unit is allowed. And what that will do is make sure that over time, everything remains consistent, and we don't start having different tenant spaces getting bigger signs. And so we wanted to come up with a unified sign plan. So what he did was he went through each tenant space using the site plan, and he showed the linear frontage and then the calculations for the sign. I can zoom into parts of it, but I recognize it's probably hard for you all to see.
To carry on a little further with what Michael said, I didn't actually just use the site plan for that. I measured everything out on site, prior to even seeing the site plan. I measured it all out myself, which is, you know, in old school terms, the right way to do it. And then, so what I used as a basis was the one square foot of signage per one linear foot of frontage. However, we put a lower cap on that. So for example, I'm going to start at the top and work my way down. There's a few larger spots that we're not going the full one per one. For example, Lots &amp; More, who has 100 linear feet, we're only proposing a three-foot by 20-foot sign, which is basically the same size sign that's been permitted for that spot for a very long time, when it was the grocery store. But now they've actually, the spot that Lots &amp; More encompasses is now taking up, I forget who was there, but it's the convenience store and the archery place. So they've expanded into two other storefronts. The next largest spot, on the far right end, there's a vacant space that technically should be two spots, but that those two spots used to be the bank. So that whole 60 linear feet right now of frontage, I have it broke down to a single two-foot by 20-foot sign, you know, which is 40 square feet instead of the 60 linear feet. And then we have the next two biggest are Wellington Pizza 2 and the post office, which are both, the post office is 40 feet, and I've given them 40 feet. Wellington Pizza 2 is 45 linear feet, and we've given them two feet by 20 feet. However, what I have drawn is only two feet by 18 feet, because we just feel like that'll be big enough and appropriate. So we're not going completely maxed out, we're just looking to be reasonable. You know, the reg that was there before was one square foot per one linear foot of frontage, which is, I'm not going to call it reasonable or common, but it will work. You know, coming from 26 years in the sign business, the kind of the average is one to two square feet of signage per linear foot of frontage, so the foot is doable. But they have nowhere near that now, and the reg states now that there's a 100-square-foot cap on that per plaza. But you know, that breaks down to 6.6 square feet of signage per tenant, which is not reasonable. So that's what got all this started. You guys with me? And I think everything that I'm telling you is all within that narrative that I typed out, that was sent out. So I think you guys have got all the information, except for this updated site plan that I put in today, because you know, like Michael stated, we agreed that it would be a great idea to have this on record, so we know what's allowed per spot.
So what, for Lots &amp; More, for example, what are the, what's the height of those letters on the two caps there? How tall are those letters?
To be honest, I don't know. I don't have that in front of me, because I'm not at the office. I've got a drawing here, but the sign is three feet by 20 feet. So the letters are ballpark, you know, I'm going to say 26 inches tall for the caps.
Okay. Oh.
So what we're looking at here, do you have a standard what the signs are going to look like? Are they going to be consistent, or?
Yes, that was, that was all in the narrative. So I didn't want to go back all, actually, I don't even have the narrative in front of me. I printed out everything but the narrative, because I figured you guys already have it. And I typed that narrative up two, two and a half weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago. I don't remember everything that's in it, but yes, per the narrative, what we want to do is make all of the signs consistent. So they'll all be exactly two feet tall. They're all going to be what we call a boxed aluminum sign. So they're a smooth, simple, clean, dimensional sign. It's not just a flat panel screwed to the wall, they stand off an inch and a half. So they've got a nice, clean, simple look. And what we're going to do is, there's a band across the front of the building there, where the signs are currently mounted. And with the exception of Lots &amp; More, all of the signs will be mounted on that band. All of the signs will be the same depth and the same height at 24 inches tall. And the variance in square footage will come from the change in length. For example, there's a vacant space, the smallest space in the whole plaza is down in the corner in the elbow of the plaza. They only have 15 linear feet, so they're allowed a two-foot tall sign that's seven and a half feet long. And then, you know, if you go down to, let's say, the far left side where it's Shailin Kempo, they have 21 linear feet, so they'll be allowed a two-foot by 10 and a half foot sign. The smaller spaces are at one square foot of signage per one linear foot of frontage. But the larger tenants, like the empty one on the far right, and Lots &amp; More, and there was another one, a couple of them are capped off, because you just, you really don't need to go quite that big. It would be nice to go a little taller, but we want to keep the signs on that sign band on the front of the building, because aesthetically, it looks really pleasing. And given the restriction on height, you can only go so long. And we feel like we're giving the tenants a little more signage than what they have now. We're trying to make it a little bigger, but be reasonable, so that the town will pass this through very easily, because we're not asking for something, you know, extraordinary.
Now, if this were to go through, would everybody be compelled to get the signs and not leave any of the old ones up?
Yeah, it's not a matter of compelled. The owner who, or owners, the one of them, I don't know if she's, Katie, are you with us? Maybe she's muted. Katie and Bill, Bill is going to either have all his tenants, and I've given him pricing for all of the building signs upfront, and he's either going to, he's committed to either having all of them done, and him paying out of pocket and just putting it into the rent for the next year, or getting the tenants to pay out of pocket. But he wants to go through and replace all of them at once. As you, as I'm sure you guys have noticed, he's been doing a good job trying to get this place cleaned up. So yeah, that's, that's his intention, is to go through and do them all at the same time.
Okay.
Granted, if we're going to talk about intentions, even with the Lots &amp; More space, if we count Lots &amp; More as an open business, which it is not yet, but if we count Lots &amp; More, even after he is open, he still has 40% vacancy in the building. So part of the intention here is, you know, again, continuing to clean things up, make things look better, and draw tenants in.
Hey, further questions from the commission? All right, one last question before I go to the public, these are not illuminated, correct?
No, sir, and there's no illumination currently. What he would like to do, and he doesn't have plans to get it done yet, but he'd like to go back in and add gooseneck lighting later on. But that's, you know, that's another day.
Okay.
But no, the signs are not eliminated, which is what's there now.
All right, questions or comments from the public at this time?
And that's for, now, we've talked about the building signs, we haven't started talking about the other, the road signs yet. I don't know if you want to hold off.
No, go ahead, go ahead and do that, that way we'll have it both out there.
Okay, so I don't know, again, and I hate to go back over everything that's in the narrative, but essentially, I'm going to try to break this down in kind of a common sense perspective here. So there's, this is kind of confusing. The building signs, in our opinion, is really simple, really easy, and we're proposing something that's far more than reasonable. So we think that's simple. The hard one here, in my opinion, is the road sign, and here's why. You guys allow, or I should say you guys, but the town of Wellington allows a second road sign if the property is X size and larger, and I can't remember what that is, but they do meet that criteria. And, but that second road sign is only allowed to list the name of the property or the name of the plaza. Now, we've got a significant hardship, and in my opinion, a safety issue here, because the plaza has two separate entrances, and they are not connected. So you have, you have the main plaza, you know, where, that everybody's familiar with. But over on the left-hand side, I don't want to call it the back of the plaza, but on the left-hand side, there's three more tenants that have a separate entrance. And that parking lot is connected to the front, but only by a service road around the back of the plaza, the kind of place that, you know, only service people are going to use. So the problem there is really needing to continue to have the tenant names that are in those back three spots on that sign, which technically is not allowed. And they don't really list a size available for, you know, what we could have for that sign either. So here's what I did, again, trying to be, trying to come up with something that would look aesthetically pleasing and draw businesses into these empty spots, but also be reasonable, so that this isn't a fight. I took the exact square footage for the, by length, by width and height of the main road sign that's out there now. And we turned that into a lighted sign. I don't know if, can you guys see the, yep, he's got, thank you, Michael, he's got the drawing up. So if you look at that left, the sign on the left, that is, and that's not a dead set, you know, they haven't approved that yet. This was just something we did conceptually to show to you guys. So that sign, it's a little taller, it's a little higher off the ground than what the other one is. I want to say, that's one thing I don't have noted on it, is the height. But I think I put it either 24 or 30 inches off the ground, because the current one is six inches or so off the ground, the bottom of the sign. You know, and as you guys know, this is Connecticut, and in wintertime, we often get snow. So to have a tenant panel, the bottom of their panel, six inches off the ground, is pretty silly. So I made the sign the same width and the same height. I just took the whole thing and picked it about two feet up off the ground, so that it's out of the, so. So that's kind of, in my opinion, a minimum in how much we raised it. Now, what I did is I started off at the top, we wanted to keep the Phelps Crossing with the train. We wanted to keep that, so we came up with a header panel, and then I took the rest of the spots and divided them up, mostly based on square footage, or linear footage, I should say. So Lots &amp; More has 100 linear feet, they have the biggest spot. So they have a 16-inch tall sign panel, Wellington Pizza, the post office, and that far right-hand tenant that has 60 linear feet, those are the next three. I'm going to call them the next three biggest spots. They're not all the same size, but they're all, I'm going to call them medium-sized spots, whereas Lots &amp; More is a larger spot. So those three have 12-inch tall sign panels, and then the other six tenants in the front of the building are all slightly smaller, so we gave them smaller spots. Now, to come up with the sign at the other entrance, what I simply did is, the tenants that are back there are three kind of medium-sized tenants. So I took the top, I took the same sign. I took the top of it for the plaza heading, and then I took three of the 12-inch spots. And that's how I came up with that size sign. So what he wants to do for these, we want to do a lighted sign, all aluminum construction, you know, typical for what we do, which is LED illumination, everything is aluminum, except for the steel member that holds it up. Structural steel in the center, LED illumination, photocell controlled. We realized that Wellington doesn't like the illuminated background, so what we'll do is we'll do blackout on all of this, which means that the, at night, when it lights up, the only thing that will light up is the actual logos or lettering. The backgrounds won't illuminate. It would be really nice if we could omit and do away with that and do them normal, because that costs quite a bit extra to do it that way. But if that's what we've got to do, we will. I've been meaning to, you know, it's funny, I'm not a coffee drinker myself, although I do, I run pretty early in the morning. About nine minutes from my bedtime right now. I'm not sure what Dunkin' Donuts did, I don't ever pay any attention to that lighted sign by the road when I go by early in the morning. I remember light showing around the outsides of it, where they didn't do a real good job with the blackout, with the color on the background. But I want to say that the whole thing lights up, which is not what code allows, the zoning regs allow right now. So that's a question, and that's the only thing we really don't have firm here, and we haven't, and I haven't talked about that, is the background, because we're willing to do, you know, we'll do whatever we need to do for that. Getting silenced, you guys all there?
Nope, I understand what you're.
Yeah, I understand that, and I, you know, that upper level of Phelps has always been a problem, insofar as letting everybody know that those tenants are there.
Yeah, it's an odd duck.
I think it's probably a good thing to have a larger sign up there. You know, Michael, you can maybe walk us through that, or what would be necessary. But in that particular situation, the upper level is sort of, you know, it's sort of like a Ford Apache when you're approaching, or when you're looking at, you know, the plaza.
Yeah, and the problem is, there's such a small sign there now, that the tenant panels, there's tenant panels there that list the names, but you, it's so small, you can't see it until you get on top of it. And it doesn't need to be massive, but it would be nice if it were somewhat legible from the other entrance, because if Bill continues, Phil and Katie, I should say, if they continue to do what they've been doing a really good job at since they bought the plaza, and that is to continue to clean up and make it presentable, and make it where, you know, businesses want to come in, what's going to happen is, Bill's going to be the successful guy that he is, he's going to bring tenants in. And then it's going to get busy, which is, that's the hope, right? Because it'll bring tax dollars into the town. But as it gets busier, the traffic is more of a problem. And that's why I said I see it as a safety hazard, because now you have people pulling in the first entrance, they're looking for their tenants, and they're, you know, and I've got an eight-and-a-half-year-old daughter, so I get it. You got people driving around in that lower parking lot, and they're looking up at signs, trying to find the place that they're trying to go to, and not paying attention to what they should be paying attention to, and that's, you know, kids and pedestrians walking around in the parking lot, and they're pulling in, they're pulling back out to go around the back, or they're, you know, they're calling somebody, because they're confused. I'm here, I'm at this address, what's going on? And that's the other weird thing, is, you know, both sides of the building, because it's one building, have the same address. So a different address doesn't get you into the different entrance, even though that actually would solve the problem. You know, it would still need its own sign, but it'd be nice if the other entrance had a different address.
Hey, Michael, maybe you can address this, just a thought. With that upper level, I mean, could it be designated on the sign Phelps Crossing Upper Level, so that it distinguishes where, what people need to look for when they're approaching the plaza? Could you address that, please?
Isn't that the point of the name of the business under the shorter sign?
Well, I guess, yeah.
It is, but I agree with, I'm sorry, what was, not Michael, but who's the gentleman that was just speaking?
Bob.
Bob, so, Michael, I actually really like Bob's idea, and what we really like to do, and I didn't do it on the drawings for this sign, but it's interesting, I'm going to, I'm building a sign very similar to this right now for a place down in Coventry, and it's almost non-negotiable that on the pole cover, which is that little box down at the bottom, that, you know, you might call it the base. Normally, on the base or pole cover, we always put the address number there. And that's, when I say normally, I mean 99% of the time, this is a 1%. So the problem here is, I didn't do it, and this isn't something that has to be asked of me, this is just a norm, but I didn't do it at this place, because both entrances are the same address number, which is kind of confusing, and I'm not really sure what the answer is there. But I do really like, on the pole cover, putting upper level or lower level, and put it right on the top of the base.
I'm wondering if the tenants in that upper level could actually put on their business cards of their addresses, Phelps Crossing Such and Such Upper Level, and then, you know, so it's the same street address, big deal, but at least it would designate what part of the plaza they're in.
I like that a lot, you know, and putting it on the base of the sign would help as well. I think that's.
You know, just, you know, kind of a crapshoot with this, but, you know, just to throw it out there.
No, definitely, that would definitely help.
So if I could, I just want to jump in on a couple of things and questions and things that have come up. So, just so we're all clear, because this falls under what's considered to be a unified commercial plaza, the commission has the ability to approve a greater sign area than what we would normally require. The problem that he's run into is not the ratio of linear foot to building frontage, but it's the fact that our regs cap out the total signage at 100 square feet for all other commercial sites. So that's why he's before you for that.
Because we have 452 linear feet of frontage, so.
Yeah, so a couple of other things that have come up. The 1907, oh two, oh four has a couple of different pieces to it. One of them allows for an additional identification sign, which is what we're talking about for the upper level. And the, I'm looking at the reg and looking at the proposed, the maximum that it allows is 20 square feet. What he's proposing is, I think he said 48. I did some math, and, you know, in my opinion, and this would be up for the commission to ultimately decide, but in my opinion, the header panels at the top, you know, I don't necessarily know that you need to consider those to be signs. You could, because it's still attracting attention to the business, but in my opinion, if he took away the Phelps Crossing with the train logo, it's not going to change whether or not someone's going to go to Wellington Pizza or the post office. And I would say that's probably not something that we need to consider as part of the sign area. So for the smaller sign, you know, that I think is roughly 20 square feet or so, which would, I think, potentially, we could remove that from the total calculation. He'd probably still have to reduce that second one a little bit, but I don't know that that helps. Crossing logo needs to be included with the train, because I think it's more of a nod to the history of the area than it is to the specific plaza.
It is, and we didn't want to get rid of that.
So the only other thing that I want to make sure we're all on the same page with, because it's sort of the greatest deviation from what's there now, is, you know, the uniform sign type, you know, the regulations refer to this unified signage design. So he's proposing that all, they all essentially have, all those tenant spaces have that same sign design in the construction, the location, they're all going to be externally illuminated. They're all going to be externally illuminated in the future potentially, but not now. They'll have the same materials. Um, they'll be, you know, use the same, same mounting hardware, and all that stuff will be the same. But what will be different is that these will not be wooden signs that are, that are sort of dark red with the gold engraving. That part is different. Um, a lot has changed in sign regulations since Wellington adopted that, and there are a lot of things that commissions can't do. We can regulate the content of a sign. And so to tell someone that has, you know, a logo of, you know, some type of design that they can't have that logo because it's, it's not uniform, is a very slippery slope. Um, and, and one of the things that they have mentioned to me is that the way that the signs are currently designed and the materials, et cetera, create, they're hard to replace, they're hard to keep uniform because of the, the wood, they're expensive. And they're, they're hard to read based on the size.
Well, that's, that's the worst part of them, you can't see them.
Right.
So you're, you're paying money for a sign, you can't read from so many feet back, and it's really hard to identify the business from them. That's the whole point of a sign.
Right, and, and so I just want to make sure that I throw that out, make that into the, put that into the record. You know, I, I think that this regulation actually creates a little bit of a disadvantage to these types of buildings, even though this is probably the only one that would make use of this. Because with Dollar General and Dunkin' Donuts, they were able to have their signs with their logos and their, their lettering and their fonts and everything. But because this has multiple tenant spaces, you know, the pre, they have been held to this higher standard of, everybody has to have the exact same sign. Um, so I, I think that, um, there's a bit of a disadvantage there. And, um, you know, I, I just want to, I just want to put that out there, and if I missed someone's question, I apologize.
Can I add to Michael's fantastic point? So.
Please.
The other, the other side to that is something that Michael and I talked about the other day, that he, he didn't touch on here. Um, I very often have to, I have meetings on site with, with landlords with larger plazas like this with, um, with signs that we look at redesigning, uh, you know, out by the road, pilot signs with multiple tenant panels. And it's a very old school mentality to have all of the signs be the same color. Not like what I just looked at the other day and were working on fabricating something new. Is where, you know, all of the signs were a dark green background with a black border around the outside and white font. And the font was all the same. But what happens is, i- in theory, that seems really great upfront, but it doesn't work in the long run. Uh, the greens end up slightly different. The text, one company's name is bigger than another company's name, so the font, some of them are squished. The green background, some of them are brand new, some of them are old and faded. And, you know, they look, they look kind of nice in uniform for the first six months, and then after that, it's a hodgepodge. They all look different, and you're not doing your tenants any favors because you can't read them. You know, I mean, yeah, they're illegible, but they're a safety hazard. You can't, driving down the road, you can't recognize anybody's name because it's all just font. So it really, from an aesthetic value, um, and you guys, you're not the business owner. So you're not the owner of, you know, the, the post office or Wellington Pizza or Lots and More, so you're not worried about bringing, bringing, uh, um, clients in. But you're just looking at this, the overall aesthetic value, and the interesting thing is keeping them all similar actually declines the aesthetic value in a, in a short amount of time. In, in ballpark, two, two and a half years. You know, it just, it ends up kind of a mess, and it, it, it doesn't work out the way that theoretically in, in your head you think it does. And this plaza is, is perfect proof. You know, the signs are all, yeah, they're, they're basically the same, but if you go over there on foot and you really look at them. Um, and when I say really look at them, you don't have to walk around, if you just get out of your car in one place in the parking lot and take a look around, you'll see what I'm talking about. They're all wood carved signs, they're all black, gold and burgundy, but they're all different. Um, they're not even the same size at this point. Uh, and it just, it doesn't look clean and professional. What do you guys think? Questions, comments?
Well, what, what I think is that, you know, obviously the businesses and everything want their brands to be seen and the names of the businesses to be visible to the public. So I, I get what you're trying to accomplish here, that, that's been a problem for years in that plaza.
I, I think, I think if we could, uh, get, uh, a new sign for the upper level, uh, with, uh, the marquee that's, uh, sort of as, uh, presented. I don't know if they want to keep the train, or I, I, I don't know if they still want to advertise it as Phelps Plaza. Um, maybe get rid of the train, just have Phelps Plaza, which would cut down on the, uh, uh, s- some of the square footage of the sign. Uh, if that would be a help, um, I, I don't know, I, I just think they need a bigger marquee on that upper level.
Yeah, I think it's a stretch not calling the top of the sign the sign, though. It, it's obviously it's advertising the plaza, it's the sign.
Can I intervene, can I intervene there?
Go ahead.
Um, I, I disagree with that. Um, it's actually very common for, well, it's, so two things. Let's, let's just go back to, uh, the feels first. Um, as a Wellington resident, I mean, yeah, I own the Sign Connection in Vernon, but I am a Wellington resident. My wife is a center school teacher, she's been there seventeen years, so I'm, I'm more than planted in Wellington. Um, I, I love the history and that nostalgia there, you know, I mean, um, we really like, and when I say we, I mean, both me and the, the two new owners of the plaza. We really like leaving the train there with the Phelps Crossing. He wants to clean things up and make it a little more modern, but this is still Wellington, and, and the train, the old train station is still. You know, it's, it's, it's still in our, in our memories. Uh, so we wanted to leave that there. Now, going back to, let's just talk about, uh, my opinions as a sign guy. It's very normal, it's very, very normal for the plaza name at the top to not be included in the square footage of the sign. As far as advertising goes, because it's, it's naming the plaza. Now, we can take the train off. I think it takes, it takes away a, a, a huge value from, I want to say the town, but I do think it takes away from, from all of it. Um, and it, and it does reduce the square footage, not by much. You know, not a ton, because I think Phelps Crossing needs to be on there. Which is funny, because, um, the two, the only two people who spoke other than me in this meeting have also called it Phelps Plaza. And I've always called it Phelps Plaza, and everybody that I know has always called it Phelps Plaza. And I found out, uh, through talking to Bill, uh, my buddy who bought this property, that it's actually Phelps Crossing. Right, but either way, as long as it's Phelps and the train is there, I, I think that's important. I mean, it's not a huge deal, we could take it off if that's what makes the town happy. But I, I think that it's important to leave, um, and it is, it is normal to exclude the name of the plaza from the square footage of the signage. Although we didn't do that on the main sign, like I said, I took the, the, that liter- that sign is quite literally exactly the same height and width in inches as what's there.
Yeah, the only reason I mention that is what, uh, Michael was saying insofar as the overall, uh, square footage that's allowed. Um, you know, I suppose we can banter back and forth with him about, uh, the regs and how to interpret that. Uh, uh, that, that's all I, that's all I'm trying to say.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Well, we were hoping that, um, in, in trying to be extremely reasonable, we were hoping it would make this very, very easy, um, and we realized that the two things that we're asking for are the increase in the cap on the building signage. Um, and, and we have kept it either at or below the one square foot of signage per one linear, linear foot of frontage. Um, in, in hopes of making this a very easy decision so that they can move forward. Um, and then the other thing that we're asking is that, that larger sign for that back entrance, because it's just an odd duck. There's just no way around it, it's, it's an odd situation. But I, I really appreciate Michael's opinion on that. Um, and I, I feel bad, I should have brought that up before, so I applaud Michael, um, but he, he's right, it's very common for that square footage to not be counted. That is, uh, that is fairly common in my business. But I understood this to be a more of li- more or less, um, the way most towns do this is a, you know, zoning board of appeals, so we're going in for an appeal. Uh, and there's not really a, uh, a, a precedent for square footage allowed or whatever for an appeal, you know what I mean, so. We just kind of, uh, we kind of left it open.
Any further questions from the commission?
No, I'm good.
How about, uh, now open it up to the public, so we have any comments from the public or questions?
Uh, Ralph Tullis, forty-seven Village Hill Road.
Go ahead, Ralph.
You know I'm going to have some comments on this.
Go ahead, of course I, I do.
Uh, with respect to the logo at the top of the signs, I, I would tend to agree that, uh, it shouldn't be counted as square footage of sign for businesses is, uh, identifying the, uh, plaza. Um, one of the problems that I've observed over the years with a lot of signage is this propensity to put shrubbery and plantings around the base of a sign. If you get off exit sixty-eight heading west, uh, there, there's a sign there for the town of Tallinn. And they put a bunch of shrubs in front of it, and they've grown up to the point that you can't even see the sign. Or the, at least the lower half of their sign. If you look at the old Google Maps picture of the upper level of the plaza, that's exactly what's happened there too. That sign is surrounded by shrubs. Now, maybe they're gone now, I'm, I'm just talking about current Google Maps pictures. I was just perusing them as, uh, as this was going forth.
Yeah, they're all gone now, he's, he cleaned that up.
Now, I'll get back to Dunkin' Donuts sign, the background is opaque. So they may have done a poor job around the edges, but, uh, that, that was specifically, uh, permitted as an opaque background with illuminated logo and illuminated text, which I'm a strong advocate of. If you look at, uh, the Big Y Plaza is what I call it, and Tallinn, it's got a Fieldstone Commons, I think is what it's called. All of the signs there are opaque background illuminated text and logos.
Yeah, they are, I've made a bunch of those panels.
And to me, they, they are much clearer and easier to read than an entire illuminated sign. Well, there's just, maybe it's just my vision, but I think it's, uh, a lot easier to read. The other thing is, uh, is particularly roadside signs, is orientation so that people passing can actually read them. Sometimes it's difficult. Don't put a sign face parallel with the edge of the road, because people driving by can't read it. I don't know that that's the case here. You have some visibility when you're coming downhill on seventy-four. But go heading east on seventy-four, you're somewhat limited as to how well you can read what's on that sign. And I believe the maple tree that was hiding that is gone now, is that not correct?
It is. Ralph, it's interesting, um, can you guys still hear me?
Yes.
Ralph, it's interesting that you brought that up. Um, if you guys will notice, I never mentioned anything anywhere in here about that main road sign being single sided or double sided. The one up by the back entrance, it's a no brainer, it'll be double sided. Um, but the sign that's currently down by the road now, the main sign is single sided and, and parallel to the road, and that is a huge no-no for me. Huge, huge, huge no-no, however, that sign is in a very odd spot where it's in the corner of the road. And Bill and I have agreed that after this meeting, so we know what we're doing, he and I are going to spend a significant amount of time one afternoon. Um, I'm going to put an old sign out there by the road, standing up, and he and I are going to drive at it, um, from different directions. And that's after I digitally do a, um, um, a viewing plan so that we can see viewing angles. Um, what I do is I'll do it from a satellite view, and I place the sign, and I place a viewing angle in front of that to show, hey, if we place it here, you could see it from here to here as you're driving by. Um, and I usually do that to show people that parallel to the road is a horrible idea. And when you put it out and you draw it out on paper for them and make it really easy, it's very obvious. Um, but in this case, it's very hard to figure out exactly what the better way to go is. So we're going to put a significant amount of work into that, because the sign is only a very small portion more to go from single sided to double sided. So it makes no sense to do, financially, it makes no sense to do single sided, as well as what you pointed out, Ralph. However, this sign is in a very odd place where it's kind of in the elbow of that turn there. Um, and we may not be able to make it double sided, although we are hoping to be able to turn it, make it double sided and turn it, we just don't know, we've got to put some serious work into figuring out whether we can do that or not.
Okay, one last comment from me, with respect to the lower pedestal for that roadside sign. If you were to take the main sign and put main level at the bottom, and the upper level sign, just put upper level at the bottom, and not count that as far as sign area. Again, it's an identifier for the plaza, uh, more so than it is advertising for a tenant. Uh, I think there's, might be some wiggle room there as far as the regulations are concerned. And I think that might help at least hint that there's more to the plaza, just by putting main level under the big sign. Uh, it may hint that there's more to the plaza than just that one area. And that may be a help. The other thing that might be helpful, a- and I don't know if it's doable with the DOT, there's no identifier on that little short segment of road, Phelps Way. There's no road sign out there. It's kind of off point for this discussion, but wouldn't that also be a bit of a help for the, for the whole facility?
It would.
Anyway, um, other than that, I'm all for it. Uh, my stickler is the illumination. I, I don't like floodlights on signs, I prefer to see illuminated text from internal. I think it's more effective, I think it's more attractive. Uh, and that's personal opinion, I, I've done a lot of traveling, and, and when I see sign faces where the entire thing is illuminated, uh, with my aging eyes, it's difficult to discern what the sign says until you're on top of it. Uh, whereas the illuminated text or logo, uh, says a lot more for me from a distance.
Ralph, you're referring to the two roadside signs, correct?
No, actually, I'm also hinting at the, uh, building itself.
Rather than downlighting them?
Correct.
Yeah, that's, I agree with Ralph on the road signs, but on the, on the building signs, it's not going to happen. Um, it's, it's, it's too much money, because who's going to pay for that is kind of what it boils down to.
But as a, uh, as a resident in town, paying for it is not necessarily my problem. A- and, and I'm saying that somewhat, I'm saying that somewhat unjust, so please don't take me seriously. Um, I, I just don't like floodlit signs, that's me, that's my personal preference, that's all. Other than that, I think this is a great, great scheme.
He would love to do lighted signs on the whole front of the building. Um, but I think it's, uh, it's just cost prohibitive. Um, but we can also, I mean, we could do a, I could quote him out for him and see whether that's something that he's interested in doing or not, if that's something that you guys would really like to see.
I'm not opposed to it, but, you know, again, it comes down to cost.
I think the, um, whether they do gooseneck or internally illuminated, I'm guessing that this is, you know, either way, it's going to be a, um, you're, you're drawing like the proposal that I did that shows Wellington Pizza too. That drawing's going to look the same, whether that's an internally illuminated sign or the box aluminum signs that we're proposing with exterior gooseneck lighting. You know, realistically, that's going to be the same, so it doesn't change our conversation today, it would just, it would, it would just, uh, be a matter of me requoting the job with lighted signs and him deciding whether he wants to go that route or the other route. But he wants to do the whole plaza at once, so he's, and he's willing to foot the bill if he can't get his tenants to pay for him, so that's, that's where that decision's coming in, but realistically. that's where that decision's coming in. But realistically, by the time we do a non-illuminated sign now and then he has his electrician come in down the road and do gooseneck lighting, I, I would imagine the cost is not gonna be too much more with the lighted signs. It's just all upfront.
Okay. Further comment from the public? One more time, any, any, uh, any more comments from the public? Hey, Mike, you have anything to add?
Um, no, uh, the only kind of, I'm, I'm been taking some notes and, um, you know, that there's a couple of things that the commission didn't necessarily reach consensus on yet, but you don't need to do that during the hearing, just related to the sign and if the freestanding signs, the logos at the top will or will not count. Um, the, the additional identification sign in the upper level, while I think we are, all are in agreement, should be larger and that needs to work for those tenants. The regulations only allow for the, for that sign to be twenty square feet. So if we, the, the commission can't approve anything larger, the, the best flexibility you can give is to, is just to not include this, the plaza name as part of the signage, which will still require him to do some reduction, but short of getting a variance, we can't do anything with that here.
Okay, we, we can discuss it though under new business, correct? What we wanna?
You can, you just can't talk to Greg, yes.
Okay. That sounds good. All right, that being said, uh, do I have a motion to close this public hearing?
No moves.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right. Have a good night, guys. That means, uh, I'm out.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
No, thank you, guys. Please, uh, feel free to call me with any question.
Yep.
Thanks.
All right, public hearing number two here, PZ dash twenty-one dash three. Text amendment, section seven point oh seven point oh two, livestock and poultry of the Wellington zoning regulations, applicant Wellington Planning and Zoning Commission. You wanna open this one up, Mike?
Yeah, um, so, you know, we've, obviously, you know, we're, I think at this point, most people are aware, we've been workshopping this for a while. We've reviewed, uh, Connecticut, uh, the guide to agriculture. We've reviewed some neighboring towns. We've talked about some of the issues we've had related to complaints. We've talked about some of the issues we've had related to a lot of people in town wanting to have the ability to have backyard hens. Um, and so the regulation that was created is a culmination of all of that, um, as the starting point, um, for, for the public hearing process. We, we weren't able to get it shared out as widely yet as we'd like to. So my, um, my suggestion would be, and I actually heard from, um, Mansfield that they were looking at it because they had had some thoughts about what to do with theirs, and so they're kind of interested in what we're doing. And I also, um, I reached out to a colleague, um, Lisa Houlihan, who's the planner in Ellington, uh, who was the model reg that this was based off of in the ag guide. And I want to, uh, get a sense from her if there are any enforcement issues or problems or tweaks that they have run into. Um, so that before we adopted, if there's some, something that's come up from them having used the reg for a while, we can think about that. So my ultimate suggestion is that we open the hearing tonight. We hear from folks, but that we keep it open at least for another meeting, so I can hear from them and, and we can kind of talk about it. The only other thing I'll mention is that we did get a, a very positive comment back from CROG. Um, they were, they were, they commended the town for, for moving the regulations in this direction. And so, uh, I'll leave it there unless anybody has specific questions.
All right, so I think the commission has talked about, uh, this quite a bit, so are there any questions or comments from the commission before I open it to the public?
No, I, I think that, uh, it'd be a good idea to keep it open. There's no, we're not in any hurry. And, uh, the more input we can get, the, uh, the more people are gonna be satisfied with the final outcome.
Well, exactly. That's why I wanted to hear people's comments tonight on this and just see,
Yeah.
see what, what, uh, what we hear. All right, that being said, uh, gonna open it up to the public. Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, your name?
Carrie Donaldson, one forty-two, Tallinn Turnpike. Um, I am a actual farmer here in town and I, I, I don't know anything about this ordinance, this, like, could you just do like a basic rundown of what, you know, y'all are thinking about encoding? So we could have like a discussion beforehand, because I don't even know what I'm talking about right now. So if you guys could just do like a little rundown, that would be appreciated.
Well, let me ask you a question to start. How many acres of property do you have?
I have, uh, just under ten.
Uh, You don't have anything to worry about.
You have nothing to worry about. You fall under a commercial, uh, farming.
Okay, that's good for me. What about everyone else? I, I don't know if there's anyone else here listening who is a smaller, but you know, if you could just talk about what you guys are thinking, that would be, I think, helpful.
You wanna take care of that, Mike? Michael, go over the, uh, the four or five, uh, particulars?
Yep. So, um, the current zoning regulations, um, require that essentially for someone to have four chickens, they need to have eighty thousand square feet. Um, so we have various definitions of what we consider to be an animal unit. Um, and, and it varies when you're dealing with a cow or a goat or a chicken. Um, and basically to have a single animal unit, um, you need to have at least eighty thousand square feet. And then it kind of goes up from there and then there are some separate regs for horses. And then if, well, once you get into a farm, which is five acres or more, we don't, we don't regulate uh, those, those specific criteria. We've had a lot of issues, um, with people in town, you know, a lot of residents in town have chickens. Um, we have complaints that come in and it's been a, a, a constant source of frustration either between the commission staff or residents, neighbors, because a lot of people want to have particularly backyard hens, but the regulations requiring the minimum of two acres is a challenge because a lot of Wellington was developed with less than two acre lot sizes. So the intent of this regulation, um, which was modeled after, um, reviewing the guide, the livestock guide that created, by the RC and D, um, is to allow for in very controlled circumstances, people that have less than eighty thousand square feet, um, to have a certain number of backyard hens essentially. So they don't need to have the two acres. And, and we've really focused on some of the things that complaints tend to relate to. We're not allowing roosters. Um, you can't, you gotta keep things a certain distance away from neighboring homes. You've got to manage your, your, your waste, um, and, and those types of things. So we're trying to, uh, dial back and relax some of the standards. But actually, in many cases, are, are more clearly defining the suitability of the site. So, so that we hope to reduce some of the neighbor, any neighbor conflicts or issues with roaming chickens and free range and that type of thing.
Gotcha. Thank you. Um, eighty thousand square feet, like, so is eighty thousand square feet two acres?
It's a little bit, a little bit under, but it ties to the minimum lot size of, for the residential zones in Wellington now.
Okay, so the, the new regulation would allow for people with smaller lots to
Just under an acre.
So, okay. So, like, half acre, like, like, what is the minimum size lot that the new regulations would allow to
Forty thousand square feet.
Which is an acre?
Just under an acre.
Just under an acre. Okay. And, um, like, I, I don't know if you guys know this, but in general, does that, like, the average size lot here in town, is it about an acre? Is it half an acre, like, like that acre threshold there? Does that mean eighty percent of the town is included, ninety percent of the town?
Our building lot requirement is eighty thousand square feet, which is one point eight three eight six acres. Um, but there are places in town where houses were built before we had those zoning regs. So there are places, Luton and St. Moritz, for example, that are about an acre in size, because I used to live there. Um, you know.
So is there anything in, like, planned for people who are under an acre? I mean, you can keep four chickens on under an acre. I, you know, I, I just, again, I ten acres, I don't necessarily have a dog in the fight, but I very strongly feel that people should be encouraged to help secure their own food sources, you know, like, we don't always need to rely on grocery stores and whatnot, particularly with chickens, which, when you're dealing with hens, I mean, roosters are a different beast, but I would always rather have city governments look towards building a stronger food system rather than a weaker food system. And I think that if you're talking about, you know, a, a flock of four, that's something that could easily be done on half an acre. So I just am wondering, do we have any wiggle room to allow people with smaller acreages, smaller lots, to be able to produce their own eggs?
We, we also have to consider that, um, they might have a neighbor right next door to them that only has half an acre, and so part of these regs is trying to be considerate of the neighbors and how far from the neighbor structure. Um, a half an acre also includes where your house is, so it's not a lot of land. So we're just trying to be considerate. We have had some people in town who have complained about chickens on neighbors' properties. So, you know, we, we're trying to balance all that.
Well, what sparked this was complaints. That, that's why we've, we've done this. We've actually loosened the regulations. So, you know, there's only so far where, that we can go.
Sure. No, I, I recognize the animal unit thing is, is a little looser than what I remember it being. Um, is there any way to maybe regulate free range and loose chickens versus contained chickens? No, no, Bob's saying no. Nothing, we, we can't do.
See, one, one of, one of the major complaints is that people on small lots were keeping chickens and everybody's into quote unquote, free range. Uh, free range at whose expense though? Because as Laurie mentioned, you, you have neighbors. And, you know, there are, I'm not saying people are afraid of chickens, but why are people afraid of mice?
Um,
Because they're unsanitary when they're allowed to.
Well, there, there we go. And part of the conversation of one of the complaints that came forward was sanitation. And, uh, one of the things also that we have to consider with the regulations that, uh, we've developed, a lot of people want to keep chickens, but they have no animal background. And if they're overfeeding and there's an abundance of, of grain left, that's gonna attract rodents.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, you know, although I can certainly understand your interest in the food source, we have to consider the neighbors of the people that are keeping the birds. And their resourcefulness insofar as being able to understand what is good management and what's not good management.
Well, free ranging birds also attract predators. Which Wellington has an abundance of.
Right, sure. I mean, they're, they're here regardless if people have chickens or not, but, you know.
Well, chicken tastes good if you're a fox or a coyote or somebody's dog.
Right. Well, I mean, chicken tastes good to me too. So, you know, and I, I mean, there's a certain amount of, you know, if someone's chickens wander into my yard and my dogs kill your chickens, well, my dogs killed your chickens on my yard. So, I mean, we, we do have that too, to consider.
Mike may have better things to do than hear about that. You know, with complaints like that coming in.
Yeah, one, one of, one of the, one of the things also is that, uh, the, uh, Michael gets an awful lot of complaints from around town. And what we're trying to do with these new regulations allow more people to be able to keep chickens, but also regulate how those chickens are kept.
Mm-hmm.
You know, r- r- running the, uh, building department as he is, he's in charge of that, there's a lot of responsibilities. And those responsibilities should take precedent over, uh, people calling up about, uh, complaints of, uh, their neighbors keeping, uh, chickens or not taking care of the chickens. So the idea of these regulations is try to tighten that up so that their office isn't, uh, inundated with, uh, phone calls about, uh, chickens.
Sure. I can certainly appreciate, you know, you, y- your resource of time is better spent on other things. For sure. Um, I'm not sure if regulating this will stop those phone calls. I'm, I'm sure you still have people calling up and you'll still have to spend some of your time on that. Um, and it, no, I, it's good. And I definitely recognize that this is meant to broaden who is able to keep chickens. Um, I just always want to keep a mind towards strengthening our town's food system, strengthening our town's access to food. And it's always good to have more people producing, you know, sound protein sources like eggs and, and chicken meat. And I, I certainly am glad that, that we're having this conversation and we're, we're broadening the, the parameters. I just don't want it to be a, you know, hard line. It, it does sort of smack to me as a, you know, I, I have a, I have a, an acre, so I can do this thing and you who don't have an acre, you can't do this thing. Which is, you know, always part of the problem that we get into when we talk about who has access to food. So that's it. That's the end of, of what I have to say. I just, you know, always bristle at people who have more land, get more access to everything and people who have less land have less access to things.
Other questions from the public?
Uh, Ralph Tullis, forty-seven Village Hill Road. Been a fun night hanging out here.
Good to have you, Ralph.
What's that?
Good to have you, Ralph.
Yeah, you say that now. Um,
Let loose, Ralph.
I said, no, I'm not gonna be critical. I'm actually in support of this. Uh, I sent Mike an email earlier this, later this afternoon, uh, before the meeting started. Uh, a couple of textual things in the, uh, the new section. As well as, I took deliberity of reformatting the entire seven, seven oh two through seven, seven oh five, uh, in, into what I think is a, a better organized, uh, assembly of all of these requirements. But there are some errors in this. Uh, perhaps just typographical. Uh, I would, uh, suggest that someone look into the, uh, definition of bovine. Uh, because it also includes bison, buffalo, water buffalo and antelopes. Um, if you allow bovine, Um, if you allow bovines, well, you can have those things. Uh, of course, that's going to be on an eighty thousand square foot lot, but.
Oh, it might have Cape Buffalo or something.
Yeah, it could. Um, you go into great detail about chickens and horses. And kind of sorta bovines, because it's combined with horses. Uh, but you also allow sheep, goats, and rabbits, but nowhere in there do you address how they should be properly managed on a piece of property. Uh, goats can do a number on your neighbor's garden, your flower beds or their shrubbery. Uh, goats are commonly used for clearing underbrush. But it's allowed. So I'm just, you know, I went through it. I I put together what I think is a sensible format for it. I asked that it be distributed to you folks. Um, it's a suggestion as to how to organize it. I don't know how many of you folks know that the uh, text of the current zoning regulations was basically assembled by me for the commission at the time. Uh, so I'm very familiar with the formatting. I didn't like the idea of going from numbered sections to lettered to Roman numerals, back to numbers, back to letters. I think it's very confusing as far as the organization of any kind of of uh, regulation. So please take a look at what I sent through. Other than that, um, I think anyone can have chickens in their backyard if they're in a small coop with a fully encompassing cage. They can free range on that patch of ground. Um, but don't let them free range outside of that. Fencing for chickens doesn't work without fencing over the top of the the uh, the yard that you give them. They can fly, and they will fly. And if something looks attractive on the neighbor's yard, they're going to get to it. So, you know, there's ways of doing chickens on a very tiny lot, but I don't know how many people really want to invest the dollars to building a small coop and yard for them. And what what's the payoff in eggs? You know, they're not getting their money back. Let's face it. It's it's that simple. I I raise several flocks of chickens, and no matter what you do or how you protect them, the predators will get to them. It's just a matter of time. So that's why I've gone through several flocks of chickens. I usually lose them all to predators. Anyway, um, I just want to add to this. I am not critiquing it. And I hope you'll give uh, my comments in my email and in the attached documents some serious consideration and let's see what happens at the next public, at the continuation of this public hearing.
And thanks, Ralph. Other uh, other questions, comments from the public? Yes, not. Okay, so we're going to leave this uh, this public hearing open. It'll be on the agenda the next time, right, Mike?
Yep, yeah, so I um, hopefully by the next meeting, I will have heard back from Ellington. Um, and I will also forward with the next set of agenda materials, um, Ralph's email, um, which, yeah, it came in today, I think six o'clock or something. I just didn't think you'd have time to get it. The one thing that I will, I'll just note, so that, you know, Ralph's talking to the organization. One of the things that we struggle with in the office is is people trying to essentially locate sections of the regs, um, the current formatting. And I recognize I'm talking to the person who formatted it, um, is a little bit challenging for for folks sometimes because we have sections like eleven point thirteen, point three, point three, point three, point four, and and you have ninety percent of that number is the same in three or four or five or six different places, and then it changes. And when they're going through the regs and searching for it, they're hitting on the same thing multiple times, and and it's sometimes hard for them to get down to the right spot. So we're trying to move some of the formatting so that the sections are a little bit more unique in the way they're defined, so that we don't have as much trouble with people that aren't used to these types of documents, finding the locations that they need to. Um, so that the sections that you're seeing, the references, isn't in an effort to try to move in that direction to sort of shorten up the regs as a whole, reduce the number of sections and make them a little bit easier to manage if you're a layperson, trying to figure out if you can have a pool. Um, but but I'll get all that together because of the other applications that we're receiving. We received tonight. You guys are going to get that stuff. I'll try to get it sent out as soon as we finalize the agenda, so you'll have time to review all that.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Can I make a comment? We haven't closed the hearing yet, right?
No, it's still open, Ralph.
Okay.
Good.
I I just want to comment on what Mike just said. One particular paragraph, Mike, and that's the one that has to do with waste management. Tell me how you're going to refer to that the way you've got it structured. Because I think that's just as awkward as the numerical method that we have here. Because you know, no matter where you are, those first few digits are in a particular section. And you can work your way back to the top, so you know where you are in a whole document. When you have something that goes seven point oh two A, one, Roman numeral, two, A. That is, to me, just as confusing to find out where in the document that paragraph is. Just my opinion.
All right, well, let it let us look at the suggestions and we haven't, I haven't even seen your email, Ralph.
I know, I understand.
All right. Any further comments before we move on to new business? All right, so we're going to leave this open till the next meeting. The uh, the public hearing, PZ twenty one dash three. And off to new business, PZ dash twenty one dash four, section nineteen point oh seven, point oh two, point oh four, special permit to modify commercial plaza signage at eleven Phelps Way. Applicant Greg Bristow, owner BTV Realty of Wellington LLC. But per personally, I like what they're uh, they're getting at with the signs. I don't mind the road signs. I did make the comment about the top of the sign, but I'm willing to live with it if I, I think it's kind of essential to have that on there in order to identify the plaza and everything. Now, and it's, if we call it part of the sign, it's going over the square footage, particularly on the small sign. So thoughts on from the other commissioners?
No, I I think, uh, I'm thinking on the same lines that you are, Walter. Uh, I think the top of the sign, uh, we should consider that not part of the sign.
I like the logo, too, the train. I think I think it adds to it.
Right, and it it certainly adds a a a sense of place uh, to that as opposed just, you know, Phelps Plaza or Phelps Crossing, whatever. I I I just, it adds to the the ambiance of the area.
Well, and they're trying to do a nice job there. You know, they've done a lot already. For years, the plaza's been kind of just kind of decaying and
Right.
Now it's on its way back up, hopefully.
Well, and I I think what what has been done before hasn't been successful. So why don't we uh, try to tweak it a little bit and see if uh, this particular approach can't be a little bit more successful uh, for them there.
I agree. How about the other commissioners, Laurie?
I I don't see any issues with the signs.
I agree.
Joe, you like it?
I agree. Yeah, I do. Yep.
Doug, you out there?
Yeah, yeah, I like it very much. Um, it's very clean. It's aesthetic looking. Um, I like everything that how it was proposed.
Okay.
One, just one other comment, Walter. Uh, their comment about uh, putting uh, something about upper level and main level on.
I'm good with that.
On the bottom stem of that sign, I think that would, anything that would uh, designate one section from the other, I think is a plus.
Yeah, I'm I'm in favor of that, and I I consider that less a part of the sign than I do the top, but you know, it's, it it doesn't matter. We we're, I think we're all on the same page. You know, and and yes, identifying the upper from the lower is pretty important. Uh, that was a good suggestion. That is a very confusing plaza.
Yep, it is.
Mike, you have anything you want to add?
Uh, nothing that I I want to add. Um, I have been sort of taking notes on the things that we've been talking about, and one of the things Greg m- mentions to me when he was making his application is that there is a bit of a rush on their end because they they want to get the store open and they don't want to have to do signage twice or do temporary signage. Um, I think they're, you know, pretty close to wanting to get that thing open. So if the commission is comfortable enough to want to move on this tonight, I have a couple of thoughts on some conditions that I think will get us where we are headed with uh, some of the modifications to bring some of those things into compliance with the stuff we've talked about, and I can go over them if you want, or I can share my screen, or you can tell me you want to wait.
I I'm willing to move forward with it tonight, provided the uh, your uh, conditions are included.
Yeah, I I'll go along with that. So let's hear what you have to say, Mike.
Okay. So the four, um, the four things we talked about were, well, one of the things that the reg requires is that essentially this, everything else has to comply. So, you know, you can't approve a flashing sign or a lit sign, which is a, you know, internal, like, blinking type thing, which is not an issue here. So condition one, um, is just that the signage plan provided shall govern the specific signage totals allowed for each tenant space. Which is what we talked about. Um, con- condition two uh, is that the additional identification sign at the eastern entrance entrance shall be revised to comply with section nineteen point oh seven, point oh two, point oh four, point oh one, which is the one that talks about the total size. Um, he's proposed it to be more, so he has, I think, six or eight feet that he'll have to reduce it, but it's not been submitted in in a way that's compliant, so we either approve the modification through a condition or we have to deny. Three, any future illumination will require a modification to this approval, um, so that you have to come back, which is consistent with what we've required to the other stuff that I've been here.
So for his down lighting, he'd have to come back.
Right, so that we can have a discussion about how as a, as the plaza, they're going to handle lighting. And he mentioned wanting to make sure that they have the ability to locate the sign so that they are visible. Um, if they're going to tweak the location when they take it down. So uh, recognizing that that may shift. Um, condition four is that the final location of any freestanding signage shall be subject to review and comment by town staff and shall not be located within the town or state right of way. Um, if he tweaks it one way or another, I don't, and you may tell me I'm wrong. I don't know that it necessarily needs to come back here. If it's not in the right of way, and it's, and if staff has the chance to review it for sightline issues and that type of thing, I think we can handle that. If you're not comfortable, I can take that off, but those are the four things that I have.
All right.
That sounds good to me.
So we got to spin this into a motion here.
Uh, well, hold on, I I typed it, so I can share my screen and you can read. Right. Can you see that?
Yep, okay, so.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve application PZ twenty one dash four, special permit to modify commercial plaza signage at eleven Phelps Way. Applicant Greg Bristow, owner BTV Realty of Wellington LLC, with the conditions. One, the signage plan provided as part of the application shall govern the specific signage totals allowed for each tenant space and shall comply with nineteen dot oh seven, dot oh two, dot oh four, dot oh one. Two, the additional identification sign at the eastern entrance shall be revised to comply with section nineteen dot oh seven, dot oh two, dot oh four, dot oh one. Three, any future illumination will require a modification to this approval by the commission. And four, the final location of any freestanding signage shall be subject to review and comment by town staff and shall not be within the town or state right of way. Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, let's see. And we've left the uh, public hearing open, so item six is uh, still ongoing. F unfinished business, we don't have any. G approval of minutes, January fifth, twenty twenty one.
I move that we approve the minutes of January, what is it, twenty second?
That was the nineteenth.
Uh, we have a three sets of minutes to approve, the fifth, the nineteenth, and the sixteenth.
I missed the fifth.
Oh, that's okay.
I have to find him.
We'll just do them one at a time. So that was the fifth, Bob, your motion for?
Yeah.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, with approval of minutes for January nineteenth, twenty twenty one.
I'll second.
So moved.
All in fa- okay, all in favor, aye.
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 All right, make a motion to approve the minutes of February sixteenth, twenty twenty one.
I have a correction.
Go ahead.
Uh, my name only has one B in it. It's, they have two Bs in my name in that, in those minutes.
Okay.
That's, that's all, just a technicality.
I move that we approve the minutes as amended.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, they're approved. H correspondence?
So, uh, I guess this can come in under correspondence or uh, staff report discussion. Um, I just wanted to give you a quick update on Loves. So they are clearing the final hurdle with the state. They are anticipating uh, site work to begin in May. Um, what that means is a lot of things for us as the town, we will have to engage, we will have to basically uh, request uh, RFQ RFPs for qualified firms to be the clerk of the works on behalf of the town. That is to be paid for by Loves. Um, they will have to submit a bond estimate and provide bonding for the stuff required by both of our approvals. And they are in the process of working through um, some of the comments that we provided for the uh, or finalizing comments provided for the conservation easements that are required for for the wetlands approval. Much of the site is conservation easement. Um, there were a couple of things that were modified, and we've gone over most of them already. Number one, they have abandoned the tire changing building. They will not be building it. So the other thing that they that they have to do, because the EPA is requiring it, is they have to expand the uh, area around, they have some underground storage tanks, and there's a little bit of an area around them that was concrete. The EPA is requiring, because of a code requirement, that they expand the the concrete pad. But other than that, um, there aren't any um, changes to to the overall plan from what the commission reviewed. Um, so so we weren't quite sure if through the state and and EPA and everybody else, there would be some major changes or deviations or or reengineering that was required. It's not looking like that's the case. So the plans that you all reviewed are likely going to match pretty much exactly um, with the addition or additional uh, changes to the tire changing building.
That's better neighbors, less noise.
Yeah, um, one of the things that we were um, able to work with them on is that once the tire changing building was eliminated, the air compressor that fills tires had no place to live. I was a little uneasy about it, and I've got them to figure out a way to get it so that the compressor itself will live in the mechanical room of the building. I was a little uneasy about it, and I've got them to figure out a way to get it so that the compressor itself will live in the mechanical room of the building and not be outside. So so I think that's a win. A lot of that stuff is going to cut down on the noise that would have been there. So we're moving forward with that on that on um on our end. I just wanted to kind of give you a quick update on that and confirm um that that. Basically, the reason why there will be a deviation in that small area, and I can pull up a plan if you want to see it, but the underground storage tank is because the EPA is required. That they expand the pad around the access to those tanks. So it's a nonnegotiable, and that will be a difference in the plan, but we can't really do anything about it.
All right, uh. Item I, public comment. Commission will hear brief comments at this time from anyone wishing to speak. No business can be conducted here nor can any comments be made about any items on the agenda. Any public comment?
I have one.
Yep, go ahead.
Carrie Dennelson, one forty two, Talon Turnpike. Um again, I'm not sure if this. Fits within the the regulations, but particularly in light of the chicken. Slash bovine slash livestock discussion. Um there was a good deal of comment made about how. Public outcry and calls and emails made to Michael were taking up, you know, his very valuable and limited time. Um I I have a comment back in May five, two thousand twenty. I sent an email to the entire planning and zoning committee and inland wetlands regarding uh creek testing. That I had on a creek that ran through the back of my property. Um.
We're not, we're not going to talk about this tonight because that wasn't allowed. That was brought up. Mike, you want to jump in here?
I am, I think I recall the email, and I think that the reason why Walter's saying we can't talk about it is because I believe it's related to an application that will soon be before the commission. Where there won't be a public hearing. And so because there is no public hearing, we we can't take testimony or 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 correspondence from from people about it because that would make it a public hearing.
Sure. When am I able to speak about this properly? What is the 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 form that I need to follow to make sure that this is lodged in a publicly recorded arena?
I I mean, if you have any, if you have questions or or comments, I mean, you can, you can certainly always reach out to staff and we can answer those questions. But the the challenge is going to be that, you know, if 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 the commission's approving anything in an administrative capacity, which doesn't involve a public hearing. I I can't put in front of them correspondence or complaints or or questions or 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 any testimony from any member of the public for or against. Or 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 neither, because we would essentially be turning that. Into a public hearing, and the concern with that is that an applicant or a neighbor or or any aggrieved party. Could say that the commission used this improper correspondence in their, making their decision. And that would be the grounds for an appeal to that decision, potentially overturn their decision. So that's why it's it's tricky and and why I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, correspondence received by the office wasn't wasn't brought in. The application last year.
So no neighbors can discuss any concerns regarding an application?
If the application is, if the application is being handled in the in, as an administrative review by the commission, then then correct. There is no process by which members of the public can speak about that application to the commission. And that is a, that is a regulation and regulatory process that's decided locally.
So what would be the best venue for someone to discuss these issues?
I guess it would, it would depend on specifically what they are. Um if there is another agency that is involved or that has a. Uh you know, has as a regulatory dog in the fight, if there's another agency that reviews these activities. Or is involved in the operations approval, whether it be liquor control or DEP or DOT. Then perhaps there may be another agency that that can address those concerns or can look into them if it isn't the PCC.
But nothing on the the specifically local level. I mean, deep is a statewide thing. Every, everything else that you named was a statewide agency. There's no other local municipal group that a towns person can appeal to.
If if there is. If it's concerns related to an application that that doesn't involve a public hearing, then then no, you 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 can't come to the planning and zoning commission. And talk about concerns you have related to an activity if there isn't the public hearing held. Uh you know, and I and I don't want to get into the, I want, I want to keep this conversation very general. So I'm not trying to not answer your question.
No, I understand. Sure, sure. How how does a a person make a an application something subject to a public hearing then?
The regulations that the town of Wellington adopted, um the zoning regulations. Specifically treat every type of application with a different approach. So we have special permits which require hearings, notifications to abutters, and uh. We put it in the paper, and then we have site plan administrative reviews, which don't require that. For the type of operation that you are referring to, the commission grants an at one year extension. And if they, in in doing so, the way the regulations are written, the um. Public hearing process is not included. So that was a, that was a decision that was made by the town of Wellington um when those regulations were adopted. Oh, I think it was in the early two thousands. I don't have the exact date. But that was a a regulatory decision that, again, uh the town made.
Sure, and I I've been on public things. I I hate, it it's nine o'clock now, I understand. So basically, what I'm hearing you say is that for a. For a permit of this particular type, the town has no recourse for public discussion. And it's been decided, that's it.
Correct, there is no, the the only option would be for the town to. To essentially change our regulations to remove the public hearing. Uh to to basically require that a permit that is renewed will will have a public hearing. But sub regardless of that, you know, if everything is in play right now, there is no public discussion. Um according to the regs, it looks like this has been in place since nineteen ninety six.
Fine, okay, well, thank you. I appreciate your time. I know there's lots going on. You guys have been on for like two hours. I appreciate your time for the town. Thank you.
And and Carrie, please feel free to call the office if you want to talk about this and you want to under, you know, I I'm happy to talk about it with you further. Just give us a call and and I'm happy to explain.
All right, great, thank you.
Sure.
All right, any further comments from the public? All right, it's item J, staff report and discussion.
Only thing was what I went over during correspondence.
Okay. All right, it is uh nine oh nine, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.